Councilmember Heinz.
Here.
Councilmember Wook.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Okay, and from staff, we've got City Administrator Bob Larson.
Here.
We've got Public Works Director Jeff Langhelle.
Here.
We've got Chief of Police Kelly Bucy.
I'm here.
We've got Assistant City Attorney, or City Assistant City Clerk Josh Stecker.
I'm here.
And from our Representatives, Josh Wies.
Here.
Annika Von.
Here.
And I thought Sarah Myers.
Here.
And our distinguished guest Senator Randall, thank you for joining us today.
Hello.
Um, I don't have an agenda in front of me, I apologize. Is there anyone that I did not call that's on? No, and I'm sure the mayor will be joining us shortly. If someone has an agenda in front of them, if they want to go ahead and introduce the next piece.
I can do that, Councilmember.
Thank you, sir.
What, did I interrupt somebody? No, okay. Um, so, thank you, Councilmember Eversold, and thank you Senator Randall for being here, and Sarah, you too. Um, we normally, you know, during legislative session would come and see you in Olympia, and we'd be wandering around the halls, and things would be frantic and hectic, and we'd be all discombobulated because different environment, but here we are today on Zoom, and really just wanted to check in mid-session, see how things are doing. Sorry, we can't see you in person. But that's obviously the way of things. We do have, did mostly just want to check in on budget requests, because those are the main priorities in one bill. We, half an hour in my world, in your world, that's actually a fair amount of time. So, really appreciate you being here for that long, and there's going to be, I think, plenty of time for other discussion, both from you, Senator, if there are things you want to ask the city about, or councilmembers, Mr. Larson, and anybody else, if there's questions that you want to have a conversation about, too. Um, and I'll just continue talking, and councilmembers, if you want to interject, please do. And Senator, if you want to, you always know you're welcome to do that as well. Um, you know, the first thing, we know the capital budget and transportation, well, transportation budget came out yesterday, the current law budget, not much to report there. In fact, nothing really to report in terms of Big Harbor, because it was no new, no new additional revenue, no new projects. But we expect capital budget on Thursday, operating budget on Thursday. Big deal for us is the Sports Center. We have a $2 million local community request for that, as well as, we have two grants. One, both are half a million dollars, one in Washington Wildlife Recreation Coalition, and one in the Land and Water Conservation Program. Um, and just as a quick reminder, this is for what we're calling the Pickleball Spot, which was some pickleball court courts and picnic areas and parking, performance stage, event lawn, obviously up in conjunction with the sports, with the YMCA, where the Sports Center is going in. So, just anything you know about capital budget generally? I know you probably won't be able to update us specifically on this project.
Sure, thanks, Josh. And you hit the nail on the head on the transportation budget. Boy, is that a sad state of affairs. For folks who weren't tracking beforehand, we knew that the transportation budget this year was going to look pretty dire. Our chair was not accepting any projects, local project submissions, because you know, the people are just driving less, you know, whether they are out of a job, or whether, you know, they're not commuting because they're working from home. We saw much less travel, which means much less transportation revenue, and it frankly was a feat of great strength and creativity to keep some of the projects that were funded in the 2015 package moving at all. But, you know, we're still optimistic that we may have another vehicle for funding critical transportation infrastructure, like projects along Route 16 in 302 in our community. That's it. Um, capital budget, you know, is a place where there was a lot of excitement, particularly before the start of session. Maybe we could spend a significant amount of money to expand our communities and build us out stronger. Um, as we grappled with some of, you know, the forecast, some of the priorities, it sounds like we're not all bringing home, you know, $10 million local project totals to our communities, which is, you know, not what I was hoping for, but I do think there'll be really important spending in in wildlife and conservation, and, you know, our natural resources, as well as in fish passage barrier remediation, which we all know that we need to do to be in compliance with the Supreme Court, affordable housing, lots and lots of good stuff. I haven't seen it yet. We get our briefing Thursday morning, I think, in, no, Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon, we get the briefing on the budget before they're released on Thursday. So, I don't have any special insight until then. I think, you know, I've driven home to my colleagues about how important so many of these projects are to our community, but we'll cross our fingers and wait and see, I think. The other thing that I'll add is that in the operating budget, our Senate budget writers have held off on spending all of the federal American Rescue Plan money, and part of that is because we frankly don't have all the rules yet from the feds about how we can spend that money, and also because we know we'll have some work to do between now and the end of session to figure out where we're missing funds. So, our budget staff and writers are working as diligently as possible to understand how creative we can be with that money. Can we use it in capital, you know, one-time capital projects for infrastructure? Can we use it in other ways? What kind of flexibility do we have, and how can we, you know, do the best good for our communities given stimulus?
Yeah, we'd actually heard that there was some talk about maybe even a second capital budget list coming out later in session after there was better understanding about the use of those funds. Is there any talk about that?
There's talk about every option. Um, so hopefully, you know, we'll have more information soon, both this, you know, whether that's tomorrow and Thursday, or whether that's in the coming weeks, but I'll keep, certainly keep you updated, Josh.
Yeah. Thank you so much for being an advocate for the Sports Center. That really is great, and we've had lots of great conversations and know that you're working hard on that. I'm sorry, Mayor, I think I may have interrupted you.
No, I had trouble signing on, so apologize. Thank you for your support, and we appreciate, you know, you submitting this for us.
You kind of already talked about transportation and the outlook. That's, you know, obviously a major talking point for us, and you've been fantastic. Every time Senator Hobbs has put out the Forward Washington and the new reiterations of that, you've had everything that the city has asked for, including that, so we just really appreciate that so much. And I see Councilmember Wook has a question. I'm going to stop talking and let her ask.
Thank you. Senator Randall, thanks so much for being here. Thanks for your work on the sports complex and working on transportation when it will be available. I want to ask a question that you may or may not know about, and that's some of the federal money coming for restaurants and bars. Our small businesses have been impacted, and our restaurants, I've had a really tough time. Is, do you know anything about this money coming to our local restaurants?
Um, so as far, I don't, I don't have specifics for you on any ARPA designations, any of the American Rescue Plan Act stimulus. I can look into more details and get those back to you. But, you know, to the, you know, really meat of your question, we came into session knowing how hard-hit bars and restaurants have been, and that's part of the reason why we fast-tracked an early unemployment fix bill to keep the premiums from rising so astronomically for business owners, because of the way that they were calculating those premiums early on. That was one of the first bills we got to the governor's desk. We've been as creative as possible with the Cares money, too, to get that to businesses and did some, you know, not sexy, but important work to allow bars who weren't able to use, and restaurants who weren't able to use their liquor licenses and all over the last year, to carry those, that spending over with no penalty, so that they can renew those licenses. More to come, certainly. You know, some of the federal money goes directly to businesses, some of it goes to commerce, some of it goes to state for allocation, and that's that state allocation pieces where we spend the most time learning about, but I'll try to get some information to get back to you about what businesses.
Senator Randall, thank you so much.
And I'm not sure if we had touched on, you know, just the, what type of sports complex that we are wanting to build. Had, had we touched on that yet?
A little bit, and I know we talked about it before session as well. I'm not sure, Senator, you know, if there's more details that'd be helpful for you or interesting for you?
It's, you know, it's a $2 million ask, and it is construction of pickleball courts, bocce ball courts, playground, event lawn, parking. You know, the park has multi-generational appeal that would draw both families and individuals, and as you know, that it's extremely important for our citizens, our, our children with the sports. We've worn out our high school fields, and, and really, the fields are, a neat thing about this, these fields are not just for our citizens, they're really for the whole community. You know, you basically have 75,000 people that are going to be drawn to these fields of Rosedale, Cromer, Letta, that really will encompass helping the whole community, all your, all your body of people that, that, that vote. And so I think it's, it's really going to be do mental health and wellbeing for, for our whole community.
Yeah, yeah, I always appreciate hearing those values. And as we're talking about, you know, investments in our community, I definitely, you know, that's one of the reasons I was so excited to submit the project. We'll see in the capital budget, you know, what we're able to spend. I mentioned, I think, before you hopped on, that it won't be as big a capital budget for local projects as we thought it would be, you know, in the interim before session started, but I think there's, there's hope still ahead. So, we'll keep our eyes out for later this week.
Thank you. Thank you so much on that.
Is there anything you can share, and I understand if there's not, but sort of how we're looking at maybe getting a revenue package this session? I know it's been up, it's been down, it's been sideways, anything, what's the current thinking?
Yeah, I will say, we had a leadership meeting this morning where we were focused on the progress for this. And I'm feeling hopeful. I've, I've been one of the more optimistic members, I think, all session. Um, but now I'm, you know, it's, it's looking like we are really in a strong position. The chairs of both transportation committees, the House and Senate, Chair Fai and Chair Hobbs, met along with the Environment Committee chairs, as well as our Majority Leader and the Speaker recently, to kind of hash out what needs to happen to get us in agreement between the House and Senate packages that have been introduced, as well as what we need, like, how many days, counting the days to, you know, what needs to be introduced at what point in order to get us to the finish line. And I think there's some real movement happening. I, you know, favor the Senate version of the package. I think there's some good stuff in the House version as well. I think, you know, if we get to something that passes out of both chambers, it's going to be a nice mashup of what we like in both, with an eye on making sure we're not building in the same way we always built, because we have to protect our environment and our natural resources, but also recognizing particularly for our community that we have, you know, dire transportation needs that we need to fix, that, you know, what, all we, politics is one earthquake, or a train derailment, or something for, you know, our entire region to get tied up in traffic and not have the availability to get to doctor's appointments, and to work, and to move around safely. So, you know, that's why we're looking at the, we'll watch it widening, the 160 roundabouts, you know, more gig harbor congestion improvement projects, as well as GORST, and some continued funding for the Tacoma Narrows Bridge accounts. I'm, you know, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it, and I'll watch closely and see if we're hitting those timeline metrics that we need to hit, but I, I think things are looking optimistic.
Really good, and you mentioned, actually, I was negligent in not mentioning that, actually, the current law budget that did come out yesterday looks like it does help on the maintain and stabilize the toll revenue, toll fees, I should say, for the bridge. And so, just thank you for that as well. I know that's an important issue for the community and for you as well.
Yeah, I want to agree with that. That's, I tend to go over the bridge more than I thought by, when I get my toll bill, and so it's, it's really nice that, that we're keeping it to the 25 cents. So, thank you so much for that.
You know, one of the things that I keep bringing up to our Transportation Commission and Transportation Committee members is the very first presentation we had in session about the, you know, dire circumstances of transportation revenue. We saw that the Tacoma Narrows Bridge, for better or for worse, kept much closer to pre-pandemic projections in that toll account than all the other toll projects in the state. You know, folks have to drive across the bridge. You know, folks, particularly essential workers, folks who, you know, work at JBLM, who have other, you know, needs that we just can't be satisfied on our peninsula. And so we shouldn't be punished for all the other bad toll accounts, I think.
Right.
Exactly.
So, one, going, I've always wondered, you know, we do have many military bases on this side, you know, Bremerton, you go up to Port Angeles, and so are they exempt from the toll? Like, I wonder, because their government do, because we're, they need that access, they need that bridge, and I'm always, always curious that they should be putting a share in because it's vital, but because their government, I wonder if they don't even pay a toll, because it's important, you know, for, for the whole shipyard of Bremerton and Port Angeles, and I always thought that they should be paying a share of the whole toll.
The individuals who are either active duty or who work on base are exempt from those tolls. I don't think there's a carve-out for them.
Right. Yeah. Yep.
You know, there is one bill we did want to mention, and it's the Main Street, Supporting the Main Street Program, and I know you're in transportation, not in Ways and Means, it is in Ways and Means right now. Has passed out of the House, and obviously, I guess, passed cut off, but hasn't been scheduled for exact, but it is a fiscal committee, obviously, so we're hoping that next week we can see that. It's 1279. Go ahead, Senator.
Oh, I was just going to say, while it hasn't been scheduled yet, I do think this is a bill that is on our priority list to move, you know, unanimous out of the House, I think is a good sign for getting traction in the Senate. I haven't heard any talk of you know, any pending amendments, but we'll keep an eye out to see if there are any, and certainly, Josh, if there are any that are worrisome to you, do keep me in the loop on that, but I think this is a bill that has really broad support, and, you know, the communities are, like, all exceedingly.
Good, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. Just Senator Randall and Sarah are always super available for us when we have issues in the districts. I appreciate that.
So, Josh, did we touch on how we can maybe help with pushing the Highway, SR16 projects?
It's a good question.
Yeah, thanks for raising that, Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was, you know, it's always great to have you or members of the council, you know, any of you come testify when we do have a hearing on, you know, a transportation package bill. There is a coalition of kids up in Mason folks mostly, who have been really, you know, agitating around the transportation package for the purposes of the GORST fix, but I think, you know, this is a case where a rising tide lifts all of our boats, so they're, you know, helping out with the SR16 project prioritization, too, by move, trying to get this pitch moving forward. We've had increasing interest and support from business owners in the region, so if you all have contact with other business owners who might also be advocate, be interested in advocating, that's always great, you know, to hear in committee that business, local businesses are depending on these fixes.
That's a good one. We have the hospital, one of our projects of Highway 16 is metering up at our roundabout where we actually drove with you a couple of years ago, and that's one, that's one of the artillery roads going off that roundabout is to the hospital. So, if we actually got the hospital to send a letter of support, you know, that, that would help with emergency situations with the hospital, because that's where it would meter. It would meter going over to the roundabout from the west side, which would, then would allow on the hospital to actually be able to exit. The other thing is, we, years ago, we went up there with Pierce Transit to try to get the buses to the hospital, and the reason they couldn't was because the air buses could not start up quick enough at the roundabout to enter it, whereas if we metered that, then Pierce Transit could actually get to the hos, you know, like, leave the hospital and be able to enter the roundabout, so we could even work on Pierce Transit to write a letter.
That would be great, and letters are fabulous. I'd also say, you know, that when it comes time to testify in committee, I would hope we could get someone from CHI, too, to drive that point home. And, you know, for folks who haven't testified before Senator Hobbs' committee before, he is one of the most stringent keepers of the time, the timer of any chair in the legislature, and so I think, you know, if you can be prepared to make your point in a minute, you are going to sail right through and be really impactful in Senate transportation.
I'm good. I haven't gone over my minute. Good, okay, those are good suggestions. I appreciate those. We do.
We're down to four minutes. Anything, any final thoughts, councilmember, or questions, councilmembers?
Yeah, I do have a question. The 7.5% of, it's kind of off the subject, the 7.5% somewhat income tax on capital gains on stocks.
Oh, the S tax.
Yes. That's what you want to call it. Is it, I heard it's only if you had $200,000 of profit. Is that, is that true?
Yeah, it's $250,000 actually in gains. So, you buy a stock, you hold on to it for a while, it's increased in value by $250,001. At that point, you are taxed on the portion above $250,000.
Right.
Um, yeah.
Good. Well, I was afraid it was going to affect me, and that's not my, as high, so it's not going to affect me.
I was looking at my Meeker stock portfolio and thinking, I'm definitely not impacted. But we did work, you know, to, you know, with some local businesses to try and kind of polish out what the impact on business is, particularly, you know, small, family-owned, you know, folks who are thinking about their business as a retirement account for themselves, to try and lower the impact on those folks. It's, we're still have a little bit of our foot on the BNO tax assessment, which we know is regressive, and we're long-term looking to find some real fixes, too. That's what the Tax Structure Work Group has been working on in Perth. But we use the BNO tax, or BNO assessment, so if your business, when you sell it, is, does over 10 million, it might have been changed even to $14 million in gross revenue, and the profit is above the profit margin, then, only then do you get assessed.
Now, is that based, the one thing, I already had problems with BNO, is it is not based on, it's based on, on the, on the dollar amount, whereas, you know, like myself, when I had a store, I, I sell $10,000 diamond, and I make $800 or $500 bucks. Boeing sells a big airplane. It's not profit margin-based. It was, so, it wasn't really consistent with how much the person's making, it was on what the product sold.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and that's where we, I think, long-term, or maybe midterm, need a more significant fix to our, to our tax system. You know, using the tools that we have available to us right now, we tried to structure that, that tax in a way that really hit the highest, you know, profit businesses and individuals. So, you know, we're not talking about net income tax on businesses, this is just a way to assess the sale value. And the numbers show us that, like, less than 1% of taxpayers in Washington State are going to get hit with this. So, they're, you know, some of the most profitable and wealthiest businesses and individuals in the state.
Right. Okay, thank you.
It is 12:30. I want to be really respectful of your time, Senator. I'll say personally, thank you so much, you and Sarah, for being here. Any sort of last, last, last comments?
No, I just, I so appreciate the opportunity, sorry, mixing up two words, opportunity to continue working closely with you all. Josh has been such an incredible asset in Olympia, and it, you know, just does so much good for our community to have that kind of skill and resource available to legislators who are trying to answer questions quickly. I also want to thank each of you for always feeling like you can share your own particular issues, and on behalf of the council as well, I'd love hearing from you. It helps me make, you know, better decisions for our community. And I am so excited to be able to do this in person again, whether that's, you know, next session in Olympia, or summer or fall events in our community. I actually, for this, I find, I qualified for a vaccine appointment, so I'm on my way to get my vaccine after this meeting, and feel so hopeful about our recovery and the light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, and we're expecting Representative Colby or any minute, is that correct? Do I understand this correctly? Annika, help.
Coming right now.
Okay, all right, there we go.
That was me, I summoned her, so.
Thank you.
When I said Annika helped, she really jumped to it, didn't she? Hi, Representative.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, good, good. How are you guys?
Good, good. You know everybody on here, right? We've done this.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, well, thank you so much for being here today. You know, usually we'd come see you in Olympia, but obviously, we're not doing that, so just wanted to touch base and see how things are going sort of mid-session here. Obviously, we know budgets are coming out here at the end of the week, lease capital and operating. Curious, you know, what you're hearing about that. Those are our main concerns, right? Our biggest ask this year are for capital funding for the sports complex, and then transportation funding for improvements along 16 to help with congestion. And so, you know, those are our big talking points for the day, but happy to talk about anything else that you or the council want to talk about. So, anything on, how's capital looking?
Well, so, capital, I have met with Representative Steele, who's our ranking, and there were several things that I had requested. I had probably one of the greater asks of all the members, and so we had to prioritize, but your guys' was one of my priorities, as I noticed, I believe that Representative Young also submitted that as one of his projects as well. And I have not seen, you know, what things look like on the Senate side, but I've spoken with Senator Randall, and I believe that she was putting, submitting in your guys' request on the Senate side as well, because usually, her and I coordinate the capital budget requests and the transportation budget requests pretty well. So, that will not come out just yet. Operating budget is coming out Friday morning, and we just yesterday briefed the transportation budget, which unfortunately, in both the House and the Senate, there was nothing. It was basically trying to fix some of the funding issues that we have with ridership down on the ferries, and there's usual maintenance pieces that have to be done. The other piece is, you know, funding for maintenance on the Tacoma Narrows Bridge, but there is the Tacoma Narrows Bridge, but there is no funding to offset, offset the decline ridership. And I am very concerned that uh, the tolls will go up. Um, and just because there was a bill that Representative Young had put forward to say that we were only going to increase it once, um, that, that bill is null and void if there's not enough funding revenue for um, to, you know, to pay our debts. So uh, like even though it's put in there, that it's basically, there's no point in putting it in there. Um, it's uh, you know, that i- if we don't have the revenue to pay, to pay the debts, then um, you know, they're going to increase the tolls in order to do so. So uh, unfortunately, that's, that's where we're at with the transportation piece. And uh, even though I resubmitted all the projects, we got nothing on our side and uh, that we didn't get anything in the Senate either. So Senator Hobbs is putting forward in another um, transportation package. This would increase the gas tax considerably as well as several other, other taxes um, in fees. And I will likely not be supporting that. Um, so uh, really the only, you know, Senator Randall will likely be supporting it. So I'm trying to work with her to make sure that certain pieces are put into the budget. Cause basically the people who are willing to vote for the package are the ones who get to put things into it. So as long as we have Senator Randall who's willing to vote for it and um, put the projects in, then I will do everything I can to work with her to make sure that we get um, our fair share for the, for our district. So um, that's kind of where we're at when it comes to the operating budget. Um, we just got the revenue forecast. It's up higher than we ever thought it was going to be. So these are now back pre-pandemic levels. And what's interesting is that there are still certain industries that are heavily hit, such as the hospitality industry. But then there's other industries that are actually doing really well. Um, and sales revenue has gone up drastically. So that, that's one of the big things. People are selling their houses. So that's, you know, the real estate excise tax is another area that we're getting a lot of funding from. And um, so we have greater revenue and that is like not even considering the additional. I, I believe it's ten to fifteen million dollar or billion dollars that we're supposed to be getting in from the feds. So it will be interesting to see how everything plays out. Cause I know that our staff is still trying to tease through what the feds just passed in order to figure out, you know, um, is this money that we get to keep and spend? Is this money that we get a, that we're passing off to the counties and the cities so that you guys can hopefully um, you know, uh, backfill some of the areas that uh, you guys have, have had issues with and um, kind of go from there.
Well, so um, we want to thank you for uh, trying to put some of these bills forward. And we appreciate it on the city's behalf. We appreciate it. The, the sports complex is very important to our, our city and, and actually to the whole county. Uh, because, you know, a lot of our citizens have been using the county uh, fields, a lot of them, the schools, and they've, they've braced pretty much um, worn them out, you might say. And so um, you know, this two million dollar construction that we're hoping will actually it not only want to do pickleball courts, bocce ball courts, playgrounds, event lawn, parking, but it would also help with um, fields that the whole county will, will use of all the, of our youth. And it will help the wellness and, and mental health and wellbeing of, of our whole county. So we appreciate your work on that. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. And I appreciate everything you guys have been doing to push it forward and, and I will do everything I can to try to get the, the revenue for that.
That's great. And are there things that you could suggest that we might do that might help that? I know it's a little smaller. They got kind of chewed down a little bit, but is there things that we could do that you, we maybe haven't thought of?
Um, you know, it's interesting because the capital budget is one of those very weird things where there's only a small number of people who write the capital budget. And I'll never forget when I first came in and um, our uh, member, you know, for the House Republicans was uh, Richard DeBolt. And um, he, he basically said that if anybody comes to lobby him on any project, that, that project is dead. And I was like, okay, alrighty, note to self, will not, we'll have to trust the process and don't irritate him because if he, if, if he gets irritated, that means that that project is dead. Got it. And so I kept quiet and I think that year we got like pretty much everything that I asked for, for funding. So uh, it, it's kind of a weird process to where there's certain districts that tend to get more projects and those are the swing districts. So intrinsically, like both sides are going to want to give the twenty-six, you know, certain projects just because that way we can go back and we can say, look at what we did for the community, yada, yada. And um, so we have an advantage there. Uh, the other one is that I work really well with the people who write the capital budget and um, you know, if they have any issues, I, I, I feel pretty comfortable. They'll come and talk to me. And so far we've gone, gone through everything and I've ranked everything and um, you know, your guys' was high up there. I know that both Senator Randall and I have made um, the Gig Harbor Fish Food Bank a priority as well. Um, and that happened to be one of the requests from the Pierce County Coalition. So in, which usually we don't get any requests from them because we're, you know, just on the other side of the water. And the rest of Pierce has to forget about us. So I was like so great. I was like, oh my gosh, they actually listened to us.
Well, those are good. Yeah. You want to know who to, who to uh, reach out to and who not to, like, like you just said. So, uh, Councilmember Woo, did you have a question?
I do have a question. Um, thank you for being here, Representative Collier, and for all the work that you do for us. And yes, we realize we're on the other side of Pierce County. Uh, so I'd like to talk and ask your opinion about House Bill twelve seventy-nine. Uh, that is the um, having to do with the Main Street program. We have a very active Main Street program with our downtown waterfront alliance. They do a lot of things for our community. They do a lot of things for our businesses. And so do you know where twelve seventy-nine um, support for Main Street is going?
Okay, so that particular bill passed off of the House floor unanimously. So I voted in support of it. And then it is now in the Senate in Ways and Means. So it passed unanimously out of committee on the eighteenth and it's now in Ways and Means. And so it will have until fiscal cutoff, which is not until, I believe, next week sometime.
A week from, a week from this Friday.
Yeah. Yep. So, so they should have, yeah, uh, they should have plenty of time to get it out. And I feel like that's one where everybody recognizes how much the Main Street program does. Um, for, I, I think in every single legislative district, it supports um, a city in um, each legislative district. So I feel like that's something that um, is non-controversial and hopefully should not have any issues. Um, but you know, it's Olympia, so you just never know, you know?
Thank you for your support on that.
Of course.
So we're also uh, seeking some funding for Highway sixteen, uh, one point one six million. And you know, years ago, we actually, you know, rode around with you and some others in a bus. Um, we do have, you know, three projects that are associated with sixteen. One is the roundabout up near Target and the hospital. We uh, we are trying to hope to meter that. That's, that's the, the traffic that would be coming over from the west. They tend to enter that, that roundabout first. And then it backs up to the, to the Target, but it also backs up towards the hospital. We also, years ago, we went, we met with Pierce Transit, we rode and they couldn't get into that roundabout. The buses were too slow to be able to pick up speed to enter the roundabout. And so we were trying to get the, the buses to the round, to the hospital. So one thing is, you know, if we got that roundabout metered, that would allow, you know, better ability for Pierce Transit to get to uh, to go up to the hospital and carry their ridership further as well as, you know, the hospital being able to access the roundabout. That's just one of three projects. So we do have uh, those are important to us and uh, we do know that this is money that, you know, it's going to cost us more because we have to do the, the state programs where it might be twenty percent more. But so, you know, every little bit of that would really help us.
Mm-hmm. Well, I am very supportive of those projects and I appreciate you guys, you know, taking me out there. Um, and I feel like the hard part is that this year with the transportation piece was that, like, us, unlike the operating budget where there was revenue growth with the transportation budget, it was um, a deficit. And then in addition, um, you know, a large chunk of the budget was spent on fish culverts. It's not spent on transportation, which in my opinion, I feel like that should come out of more of the, the capital budget, but um, it is what it is. And uh, so for the transportation budget piece, they, they were trying to tell me that they gave me a great deal in fixing some of the funding issues with the ferries. But I'm like, I'm sorry, but you know, like, we should have also had responded when there was no ridership to accommodate the ferry schedule. And that should have changed earlier so that we could have saved money on that end. Cause if nobody's riding the ferries, why do we still have the ferry rents? But anyhow. So they tried to claim that that was the win that we got for the twenty-six was um, you know, backfilling some of those funds. Um, and I'm a little irritated with that. Um, but we will see about this other package um, that Senator Hobbs is putting forward. Cause if, if that does pass, um, that would have, uh, it's, you know, I'm, I'm almost positive that Emily put those in, into there. Cause I know we talked about it and um, I feel like those, those would be able to be funded out of there. And I also feel like they purposefully did not put in member projects because they wanted to say, oh, but look, we have this other shiny package over here that you could easily vote for. Um, but it's also comes with a uh, not very popular large gas tax increase as well as other tax increases. So it's like, you know, what's, what's going to be the trade-off? But I, you know, it, unfortunately, the transportation uh, uh, budget is very different than the operating and the capital budget where I have had historically more influence of getting things in there. Um, and with the transportation budget, you know, historically, like even though we got the, our projects in there, the governor vetoed all of them. And that was, what was it, three years ago, two years ago? And then we had taken it to court and basically he's not able to veto them anymore. But instead, they just didn't put most of the, of the uh, member projects in there.
Right. Just found another way around it. You know, thank you. Thank you. Uh, yes, Chief.
Yeah. Thanks Representative Collier for your support in lobbying against some of the uh, police reform bills that were very overreaching at the outset. Uh, some of those bills have died and uh, some have been modified where they're at least a little more palatable. Still a little bit of work to do on ten fifty-four. The tactics bill, do you happen to know where that's uh, the flavor of that is going?
Yes, I know that we had worked on that one quite a bit. And
I think the lingering issue is the use of military equipment.
Specifically. Yeah. Okay. So that, well, okay. So that one came out of committee in the Senate last week along party line. So it still is not good. And even in the House, we had a few Democrats that came over to our side and voted with us. And that was Ru- Rule, Paul, Shoemakey. Um, yeah, so it looks like we have three uh, oh, and Chapman, we had, we had four Democrats that voted with us on that bill. So um, uh, it'll be very interesting to see how things go. Um, sorry. Yes, it still has the medical equipment in there. And it still has yeah, it still has the tear gas guidelines in there. But I, if I remember right, I believe that that part was okay. Cause it allows one type of tear gas, but not the other.
Under certain circumstances with the chief's approval and all that. Armored vehicles was, I think, the real hangup, the last remaining hangup. So.
Okay. Yeah. So it looks like they took out the, the dog portion. So that's
Right.
Yeah. So, so we'll, we'll, I mean, it's now in the Senate, so I, I don't get to see it until it comes back to the House if they make changes in the Senate. So if they don't make any changes in the Senate, they push through, then it's, it goes to the governor's desk. But, but it looks like they did make some changes in the Senate. So it'll come back to the House and we will have another option to vote on it. Um, and so you know, we'll, we'll see what, what it looks like. But I do know that there are a lot of people who are working on that because the, the dialogue is incredibly frustrating. That's for sure.
Well, thank you for your help on that one and the others.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the liability bill in particular that you guys managed to kill on the floor of the House was very, very helpful. Really appreciate that. That was, for local governments, that was a very, very problematic bill.
Well, and I, I think that a lot of people forget that a lot of the members come from local government. So um, when, after, I feel like after you've worn that hat and you realize like how vulnerable you are to, you know, a lawsuit and how it can really, you know, affect the whole city. You know, it's not like it's the state where we have a bigger budget and we can absorb it a little bit better. Um, and I, I feel like it's, but that's helpful. It's very helpful to make sure that we've got, you know, people who've had that local government hat on um, to push back. So uh, cause it comes from all, you know, it doesn't matter what side of the alley you're on, that, you know, I feel like once you've been through local government, then you still have that hat on and and you're like, wait a second here. This isn't, this isn't completely good.
What are you most excited about that you think that's going through?
Oh boy, this has been an interesting session for me. So I don't know if I'm really that excited about a whole lot of things going through. Um, so you know, I, I, I know you guys are working virtually, but we are as well. And it has been incredibly frustrating. Um, and luckily I have a group of my colleagues where we meet and we can coordinate, um, you know, uh, issues with bills and we coordinate things with uh, our floor speeches and stuff like that. Um, and it's been incredibly helpful, but it, it's been very frustrating as well. And um, probably, you know, one of the areas that I've been working on this year, now that I'm ranking for Housing, Human Services and Veterans Committee is um, trying to get a pathway out of the eviction moratorium on, and making sure that we have rental assistance available. It looks as though we've got a billion dollars coming in from the feds. And that's not even including the funding that we have set up, which was six hundred million we've already allocated. And then we have another bill coming through that would um, allow for, I believe, another six hundred million dollars uh, within the next couple of years. And so I would really like to see a pathway out of this and making sure that we can make people whole and hopefully get our state, um, you know, back to some sort of normalcy because uh, I think a lot of people are, are, are still hurting and um, you know, it, it's now that we've got the vaccines and we have the ability for um, you know, we have a lot more education as to who COVID affects. I feel like we're at that point where we can, you know, start coming back to normal. And that's what I would like to see. But probably the, the most exciting piece is fixing the housing issues that we have and then also making sure that our kids are going back to school.
Right. No, those are very important. You know, there was a bill that they were going to try to, if people couldn't pay their utility bill or, or just chose not to, that it was going to be thrown on, on the landlords or on which a lot of, you know, a lot of people only have one rental and, and depend upon that income. Or they were going to throw it on the cities, um, to make the cities absorb it all. Uh, and I know in two thousand and seven, a lot of people just chose not to pay their rents and for years and still go. And I know in 2007, a lot of people just chose not to pay their rents, and for years, and still go off to Hawaii or vacation. Did that, did that, uh, did they change that bill to where it wasn't going to be thrown on the cities?
No, I know that that was Jeremy's.
Yeah, that bill died on the floor.
I think it, it died in, in rules, right? Yeah, so it got out of committee, but it died in rules, and, um, you know, uh, I think, I think the frustrating piece right now is that for property owners, that they're, they're, they're feeling really frustrated, because, um, it's one thing if you've got like a large rental unit and you've got 1,000 units, and you've got, you know, 10 people who aren't paying, um, you know, that you can usually absorb the cost, but if you have one or two rentals and, one of those people aren't paying and you still have mortgages on those, uh, I mean, they're, they're really frustrated right now. And, and so especially with the unpaid utilities, and is it fair to go after, the property owner for that? And the only, in, in committee, what they said was that it's a lot easier to go after the, to make the property owner pay than it is the, the renter. But it still doesn't make sense that that would be considered to be fair.
No.
You know?
It's not. I, I know people that have rentals, and they only have one or two, and, and they've had the same tenants there for years, and then the tenant just used this as an excuse to not pay, when they still had their job. And my friends had to sell, they had to sell the house in order to, uh, change the, to get them out, and that's just not right. You know, when, when they can pay. Um, so thank you for, you know, you, we're pretty aligned with, um, with, with your thoughts and your morals, and I appreciate your hard work.
Oh, well, thank you. I, I appreciate all of you guys as well.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, anything we can do for you? Um, I mean, we'd all love to be open, and then we'll enjoy hopefully, hopefully getting together this summer, but is there anything that we can do to help support you?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head, other than making sure that you're touching base with Emily and Jess, Jesse on the other projects. That would be helpful, but, I mean, other than that, it's, it's, it's just a really weird time of the year, and, um, you know, we've only, I, I think we've only got about, what, 45 days left, and, and then we're done, and it's, it's really bizarre. So I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but I would, I'm super excited to actually see everybody in person whenever that is, so.
Yeah.
It's only 32 days, Representative.
It was only 32 more days. Oh, wow, I was adding time on.
John, Josh, you're not counting either, are you?
No.
He's like, 32 days and 11 hours.
Well, we appreciate all your hard work. It's, um, I don't know any, any politician that has not yet, they had no idea this is what they were going to be trying to live through and, and work through, so, it's a challenge for all of us, and, uh, so we appreciate all your hard work, and, yeah.
Well, thanks a lot, and I appreciate you guys as well. And if there's ever anything that comes up, feel free to reach out anytime. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, everybody. Nice to see you all.
Yeah, so thank you. So we're, um, we're doing this, uh, is it Thursday again?
Yep, Thursday at 3:30 to 4 with Representative Young.
Okay, all right. We thank, uh, Josh, uh, Anika. I really appreciate your hard work and, and prepping us, you know, so thank you.
No problem.
I think you all, those were both good conversations. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you.
Good to see you.